Call on Mr. Steven Svensen, Svensen, sorry, Svensen to address the council. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Steven Svenson. I live at 205 North Sheridan Street, apartment 401, Fergus Falls, Minnesota 56537. The name of the property I live at is Riverview Heights. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to your council. Fergus Falls is a small city that in 2020 reported a population of 14,000. I moved to Fergus Falls in February of 2018. With few exceptions, my experience in Fergus Falls is that the people here are neighborly, friendly, caring, and helpful. Prior to arriving in Fergus Falls in one of my long-term employments, there were times I needed to remind myself to keep things in perspective when operating in a work situation. What I mean is when a service provider is working with various parties and one of them is a friend, it is natural to listen more closely to the friend. It can also be easier to understand the position of a friend because of shared connections. But the performance of service providers is measured by employers in the community, not friends. The employer in the community evaluate performance in terms of adherence to carefully designed procedures. Those procedures result in predictable actions by service providers that employers, politicians, and others in the community depend on. Periodic reminders of a service provider's responsibility to perform according to organization guidelines can benefit a service organization in the community that they serve. Thank you again for letting me speak.
Thank you, Steven. Thank you. We also have an open forum request from Dr. David Bjork. David?
Thank you. My name is David Bjork. My address is 17786 Silver Ridge Road, Fergus Falls, 56537. I'm here representing the Matthew House. And I've been led to understand that on the basis of the work that was done, you will be taking action for these funds that were committed for an arrangement that was made between the Matthew House nonprofit organization and the city of Fergus Falls. And I just wanted to express appreciation for camaraderie and the relationship that we have had through the process. We had over five days. We had 10 volunteers that went in significant hours. And Pastor Todd, the director, could barely get out of bed the Sunday morning after doing the work because his leg being so sore. But it was a positive result. And I just wanted to express appreciation for the administrative staff, the council members that took the time to meet with us. And the interaction was professional, respectful, gracious, and I just want to say thank you. And it was fun to get to know people that I didn't know before and to learn how government works for the people of our community. So, thank you.
Thank you, David. Thanks to you and Pastor Todd and all the volunteers for all the work you do at the Matthew House. That's sort of an important need in our community, so thank you for that. All right. With that, we'll take a short break and we'll come back at 5:30. Thank you, everyone, for being here. It is so great, it is so great to see all the youngsters and to think you're all here to hear Bill Sonmore's budget presentation. That is amazing. All right. We're going to call on Pastor Rich Iverson for Church Leadings and the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
You may need to get coloring books for your city council. This is a prayer from Every Moment Holy. I used this before and I looked at it, I thought, this is so good, I want to use it again. So, our lives are so small, oh Lord, our vision so limited, our courage so frail, our hours so fleeting, therefore give us grace and guidance for the journey ahead. We are gathered here because we believe that we are gathered together into a work we cannot yet know the fullness of. Still we trust the voice of the one who has called us. And so we offer to you, oh God, these things, our dreams, our plans, our vision. Shape them as you will. Our moments and our gifts, may they be invested toward bright eternal ends. Richly bless the work before us, Father. Shepherd us well lest we grow enamored of our own accomplishment or entrenched in old habit. Instead, let us listen for your voice, our hearts ever open to the quiet beckonings of your Spirit in this endeavor. Let us in true humility and poverty of spirit remain ever ready to move at the impulse of your love in paths of your design. You alone, oh God, by your gracious and life-giving Spirit, have power to knit our imperfect hearts, our weaknesses, our strengths, our stories, and our gifts one to another. Unite your people and multiply our meager offerings, oh Lord, that all might resound to your glory. May our acts of service and creation, frail and wanting as they are, be met and multiplied by the mysterious workings of your Spirit, who weaves all things together toward a redemption more good and glorious than we have eyes to see or courage to hope for. May our love and our labors now echo your love and your labors, oh Lord, that all that we do here in these are brief lives. In this our brief moment to love, in this the work you have ordained for this community. Flower in winsome and beautiful foretaste of greater glories yet to come. O Spirit of God, now shape our hearts. O Spirit of God, now guide our hands. O Spirit of God, now build your kingdom among us in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in peace, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. It's 5:30, September 19, 2022, and we'll call this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 But we do have a quorum. He was throwing his voice.
There's no accent.
First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, and I will ask our acting city administrator, Bill Sonmore, if there's any additions or corrections to the printed...
Nope, it's as printed.
As printed, see no additions or corrections. I would entertain a motion accepting the agenda.
For that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Bill.
I'll second.
Thank you, Krista. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. A motion carries. There are no public hearings this morning. Our first item of business is awarding of bids. So we have a resolution awarding the bid for Public Improvement 9767, which is Phase Two of the Downtown Riverfront Project to Comstock Construction of Fergus Falls in the amount of $3,591,292.24. And we'll call on our community development manager, Clara Beck. Good evening, Clara.
Good evening, Mayor and councilpeople, and to all of our visitors. Thank you for being here. I am just going to give a quick little overview and background of what we're doing tonight. As you will recall, back in April, on April 27th, bids came back for the first round of Phase Two, if I can call it that. They came in fairly high, $4,990,733.53. At that point, council deemed that too high of a project cost, it was sent back to the drawing board for a re-scope. And what we have here in front of us tonight is that re-scope. So in that time, the project was reduced. There was an elimination of some parts of the trail that were laid out, revision of the site, and the project was rebid with seven different alternates for flexibility. And I'll have Kent Luaji come up and get into a little bit more of the details of what actually did go out for bids and what you'll see in front of you for a project, but just as a little bit of an overview. So tonight, the project that's in front of you does still include many of the items that were initially put in the project that were deemed as important to the community. We have kept those in there. So what you'll see in front of you is a splash pad with a variety of different features for fun playtime, restroom, sidewalks that are going to continue the beautiful work that's been done with Phase One across the street and over here onto this side of the project, a plaza area and a complete reconstruction of the parking lot that's also attached to the project area. Also of interest may be some art foundations and some public art projects that will also be part of the project. Staff is not recommending the acceptance of an alternate two, which was part of the bid project or the bid package. That would include pieces of a trail that would continue down and then connect up to a bridge. There's no longer a bridge that's part of our project at this point in time. So that's kind of where we have been, where we are now, scaled down project with a new price tag that Kent is going to give a little bit more insight into, and then we will have budget numbers from Bill. So, thank you.
Thank you, Clara. We're calling Kent Luaji from Boltman Mink. Good evening, Kent.
Good evening. Thank you, Clara. So the bid package included, as Clara mentioned, the base bid and seven different alternates. Alternates are also a piece of the whole when it comes to the project with alternate two being a trail extension along the river that really isn't needed since the bridge isn't part of the project. So two bids were received. We opened bids on August 31st. The apparent low bidder was Comstock Construction. Their bid amount was $4,070,455.67. The second bidder was Meyer Contracting. They were at $4,606,615.95. The engineer's estimate was 4.2 million. So during our review of the bids, we also noticed that one of the prices of Comstock had included a bid seemed incorrect. So we contacted them and talked to them about it. They confirmed that was a typo in that price, and they agreed that if the city did proceed with the contract, that they would agree to revising that price with a change order that gets processed concurrently with contracts. And the correction of that price would reduce their bid amount by $106,260. And as Clara mentioned, after discussion with city staff, it's recommended to proceed with all phases or all alternates of the project, except for alternate two. And deducting that alternate two amount from the total amount bid and also accounting for that price deduction I just described would result in a contract amount of $3,591,292.24. From an engineering standpoint, we would recommend that the city wishes to proceed with this, we would recommend accepting the bid and processing a change order concurrent, accepting the bid for the base bid and all the alternates except alternate two. Verify that. And also processing a change order concurrent with contracts to correct that price.
Thank you, Kent. With that, I guess we would... Bill, would you like to break down the sources and uses?
Thank you, Your Honor, council. As Kent talked about the bid, then we have the total project when you add in all the design, the construction, administration, and whatnot with that. We have a project of $5,292,190. So I have that on a summary in the packet that went out that shows total project cost. So that's what we're going to talk about there. We did point out that is that construction contract you would award plus design and construction administration, city staff. That would be our engineering staff that works directly on the project. Someone like me doesn't get charged to the project. And then we do have a 10% contingency. That's correct, right, Brian? Which is standard whenever we do our projects. So the funding sources for this project, you'll see on that page, we have fundraising at the top of $2 million, and I know, you know, the mayor will talk a bit more about that after a bit. So that's number one on there, is fundraising of $2 million. Our ARPA funds, the balance of that, of $713,000, looking at putting that towards this project. As you recall, we've used those funds also to work out the Bigwood, you know, updating the technology and helping that to get off and running. So this would be looking at using the balance of that. And then we're ending the sales tax that we're paying for the library now at the end of September, and I'm projecting we should have a balance that we transfer to the general fund of about $500,000 that could go towards this project. The parking lot budget, we've been accumulating $35,000 a year in that. I think we're up to about 130 in that fund right now and looking at pulling 100,000 of that towards this, obviously for the parking lot portion of the project. We have some MSA for streets in there, again, towards that parking lot area, for 160,000. And then if you remember, we had an abatement in place a number of years ago for the mall. And we have, that was just used as a guarantee at that time. We never had to use that guarantee, so those funds are on hand. That's about 125,000, so using that. And then we had Boltman Mink pull out what is the sewer portion, the water portion, stormwater portion, and putting those towards those individual funds. And you'll see that of 95,500 for sewer, water fund, 38,000, 157,000, and from the stormwater fund. All that being said, comes down to what's the amount we need then to do in a general obligation bond like we did on Phase One? And that amount would be just a little over 1.4 million. That's, when you add issue costs to that, which you do on every bond, it comes out about exactly where we were at with Phase One, not by design, just the way that came out. So we would need to bond and levy a tax then to support those bonds for that 1.4 million. We would do that over a 15-year term is what we're proposing. That's what we did on Phase One as well. When we look back at Phase One, we looked at like a 10-year, 15-year, 20-year, kind of went in the middle option there, which is typically what we do with streets as well, too. So that's why we're recommending to you that 15-year option to pay that back, and it mirrors then Phase One. That would be about $140,000 a year levy for that, about a 1.83% levy increase over the budget that we're projecting for 2023. The impact to a $250,000 home would be about $27 a year, or for a million dollar valued commercial business, about $225 for that year. I do want to point out, when we actually look at bond, so when we look at the fundraising, and again, I'll let others talk more about that, but a portion of that fundraising is going to come in over time, like we did for the arena or like we did for the library. So we bond for some of those costs, too, and then we use the tax levy coming in and then those donations coming in to pay the debt service on the bond. So when you add the portion coming in over time, and actually out of that 2 million, we're projecting a lot of it coming in by construction, but it would bring the bonds up to 2,125,000 is what I'm estimating at that, at this time. So that difference would be what would come in like in the years 24, 25, 26, and 27. So yeah, that kind of summarizes that process. Not asking you for approval on those bonds at this time, we're not ready. I just wanted to put a good finance plan together so we knew where we were at tonight.
Thank you, Bill. So to the fundraising, if you remember at our April 27th meeting, the last time we talked about this, and we re-scoped and authorized the rebidding of this project, Councilmember Hicks expressed his support for the project, but he also expressed his belief that we would need to do some community fundraising in order for this project to go forward. So in the time since the April 27th, we've worked internally with Councilmember Hicks, myself, city staff, to determine what is that, what's a reasonable number? What's the appropriate number for a project of this scope? And we came up with the number of $2 million. And so we realized with the $2 million fundraising campaign, we were going to need the Vidin Trust to be on board. If you remember, the Vidin Trust were the ones who initially supported the project. Their initial support was for the amphitheater. Of course, the amphitheater is no longer part of this project, and they've remained engaged in this project, but they've always been adamant that the project be completed, and they've supported different parts of the project. So we got in the car, we drove down to the Twin Cities, Andrew Bremseth and I, and we met with the Vidin Trust, and we told them, this is the project that the community supports. This is the project for us right now. We need to raise $2 million in our community, and we need your help to do it. We did that earlier in September, well, giving them time, knowing that the council was going to take this matter up on September 19th tonight. Well, I'll say that within a half hour of us leaving the Twin Cities, they were on the phone and said they were in, they were supporting us in the amount of $1 million to get started on that fundraising campaign. They said they'd be payable 500,000 bill like this, 500,000 this fall, 500,000 before this project would break ground in the spring. So I hope you'd agree that's very good news. And the other piece of good news I want to share on the fundraising, we've had two individuals in the community, I think you know them both well, who have stepped up and committed to being the leads for the fundraising effort. One is Piggy Underwood, whose family has been involved in pretty much every successful fundraising campaign this community has done. The other is Tasha Rolfs, who most recently was the force behind Otter Cove, and I think the force behind the children in the audience being here tonight, too. But anyway, that to me is very good news. I think that fundraising campaign would be in very good hands, and I have all the faith in the world in them. So if it's not too much, I'd like to just ask, Tasha, would you just comment on your commitment to the fundraising for this project?
A part of the invocation that stood out to me was the phrase, "We gather because we believe." And I think we gather because we believe in this project. This is a hugely important project for the city of Fergus Falls. You look at splash pads and the communities that have them, and they're truly the mark of a modern and progressive city, cities that really promote livability and that want to attract and retain young families. Peggy and I have chatted a lot about the importance of these in communities, and she's seen them firsthand and the impact that they have on communities as well.
Thank you for allowing us to be here today. I spent quite a bit of time in Cincinnati, Ohio, where my granddaughters live, for the past year. They no longer live there, but part of their city park in Cincinnati, which is beautiful, is a splash pad. And the thing that I loved about it is that anybody, no matter rich, poor, athletic, clumsy, anything, it's a fun thing to do, and you have people of all stripes there, and it's just so much fun. And I just think we have got such a good start with the pavilion. If we could stretch that out a little bit and have something for kids and young families to do, I think we are well on our way to having a really great city.
Thanks.
And we thank you for your support, and we're very honored to lead this effort, and we believe we can do it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So with that, I guess it's back to the council. The consideration on the floor is the awarding of bid to Comstock. Tom?
It would be my honor to offer that resolution.
So the resolution is to offer, to award the bid, resolution awarding the bid for Public Improvement 9767, Phase Two of the Riverfront to Comstock Construction of Fergus Falls.
I will second that, Your Honor.
Jim, thank you for the second. Questions from the council for Bill, Kent, Clara, Tasha, Peggy?
Can I ask a question of the audience? You kids want a splash pad?
Yeah.
That was kind of unfair.
Works for me.
Scott.
Ben, could we just get a reminder then of the timeframe, the projected timeframe, when we would expect to have the documents together to go to bid, and when the groundbreaking might happen, and what people might expect as far as the calendar as this goes forward?
Sure. Kent, can you correct me? The way the bids were awarded, they have construction season up for, majority of construction will begin next spring?
Yeah.
Could begin, could begin anytime, but...
Begin anytime, but we expect the majority of the construction to occur in 2023, splash pad being operational by Memorial Day of 2024. The reason we opened up that wide was to allow the vitters maximum flexibility in timing of their own schedules and in an effort to avoid material delivery delays that we've all been hearing about for a while.
Thanks, Kent. Any other questions? Comments?
When we did the first phase, there was discussion about food truck hookups and stuff like that. Is that going to be in this plan?
Not at this point. That is not in there.
Okay. I feel like that should be in there. So I don't know how we go about doing that, but that should be something we look at for sure.
Ms. Caroline? I think, yeah, we can have that discussion at, because it's been bid at this point, so that would have to be a change order at some point in the future, and that's a conversation we could have.
I believe that was one of the scope reductions we made.
Okay.
We can reconsider.
We do have them, we do have them half a block. But I agree with you. Did you have a comment, Justin?
I guess just, we've come a long way, and I think there's been a lot of work down there with master plan, and I've had a lot of positives from community members, and some maybe that weren't maybe for Phase One, because they didn't really know what it was going to look like. And now since Phase One's happened, there's been a lot of positivity that I've received. And so I just want to thank everybody that's worked on that, staff, citizens, and I'm excited to see what Phase Two. Obviously, the renderings look beautiful, and I think we're going in the right direction.
Thanks, Justin. Scott?
One other comment I'll make, just so that we get it in the record and remember to come back to it. As we consider change orders, whether it's for food truck hookups or anything else, the water system for the splash pad can be done a number of different ways, with a drainage system or recycling system or other things. And some are more expensive than others. And depending on how this was packaged together, we may have some options there to save some money or to save on maintenance or related. So if we can take a look at some of those details, I don't think we need to do that at this moment, but I'd like to have an opportunity to look at some of those details.
Thank you. With that, roll call.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. We have one more, and that's just, it's a resolution, same project, Public Improvement 9767, approving the total project budget in the amount of $5,292,190. Some would like to offer that.
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Krista.
I'll second.
Thank you. Caroline, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. Thank you all for being here. All right, now on to the rest of the agenda. We have no petitions or communications this evening. We have four items for discussion, consideration on the consent agenda. If anyone has any questions on those, I guess we will remove them, or we would entertain a resolution accepting the consent agenda. Caroline, Jim, thank you. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. Under ordinance and resolutions, tonight, we have six items. First is a resolution accepting the project plans and specifications and authorizing the advertisement of bids for Public Improvement 9508, the Regional Treatment Center Phase Three Preservation Project. And we will welcome our city engineer, Brian Yvaro, and I know Bruce Paulson's also in the audience, so good evening, Brian.
Thank you. Good evening, Your Honor, members of the council. Yes, this memo before is in regards to Phase Three Regional Treatment Center, Public Improvement 9508. Yes, STANTEC is here. We substantially completed the project's plans and specifications. The Minnesota State Historical Preservation Office has also done their, completed their typical 30, 60, 90 plant review of this project. I've included their response letter and along with the city's response letter to them that they had sent out. And if you recall, Deed is administering a state bond for this project, so therefore I've also contacted Deed in regards to the works built and work items, just to confirm eligibility of expenses for this project. this project that if we proceed, you know, successful bids can proceed, we will of course be reimbursed to them. The estimated cost for the base contract of this project is $898,000. It also consists of five bid alternates with, so for $830,000. So we're looking at a combined total of a $1.7 million project that we're estimating. Therefore, we got a public day advertisement for bids. Now, if we flip over to the budgetary impact, we're proposing like we haven't before, the remaining state bond funds from Phase Two and Three, we have unexpendated balance of about $1.7 million. I want to note, just where I talked about the combined estimate project cost is 1.7. We have about $1.7 million remaining. However, our total costs do have to include engineering and everything. So hopefully we get favorable bid prices, but whatever, we do get in bid prices, our award recommendation's going to be in consideration of the remaining funds we have. So at this time, I'll just turn it over, as what I'm requesting is to accept the project plans and specifications, and also the authorization to advertise for bids. So I'll just turn it over to Bruce Paulson too, to go a little bit more about his review of SHIPPO with this project, so.
Thank you, Brian. Good evening, Bruce.
Good evening, Your Honor, and city council members. Got through the 30-60 and 90% submittal, as Brian indicated, with SHIPPO here. First response back was after I submitted the 90% drawings. And then we had, we had a brief flurry of email exchanges between myself and SHIPPO staff, and Brian was included in those emails. I did have a conference call with Sarah and Natasha from SHIPPO regarding the project. And then they sent the letter of September 6th to us indicating a couple of their concerns. And pretty much all of their concerns were addressed in the letter response on September 8th. Their concerns were of not removing the doors in Building One and stacking them. Their concern was that if the doors get taken down and stacked, that they eventually disappear, and they don't get put back in, or they get put back in in the wrong location, or they get damaged when they're done. And so we revised the drawings to add a bent steel plate that would get attached to the center, over the center hinge on every swinging door inside the building to hold it in its fully open position. And their other, their big comment was adding passive ventilation to the entire campus. And Brian and I tried to explain as tactfully as we can that there's only a finite amount of money that's available for this project to get this done. The SHIPPO staff keep saying that while we just take the window air conditioning units out, put louvers in there, that that will be sufficient. Well, it's not, because a lot of the floors don't even have any air conditioning units. Several buildings only have three or four units. That's not nearly enough ventilation to make it work passively. Plus, the entire ground floor of the campus is basically below ground. So to try and take windows out and put louvers in for passive ventilation only works in spring, summer, and fall. As soon as you get to the winter, the louvers are right at ground floor, louvers get covered up with snow, or the snow starts blowing in the louvers and it's defeated the purpose of the ventilation system. So we will, you know, we're hoping bids come in favorably so that we have some additional funds to do some of the passive ventilation that SHIPPO is requesting that we do. And that, that will be dependent on how the bids are received and if there's any funds available to move forward with doing that. So those were the main, main concerns from SHIPPO. Like I said, I received their letter late in the evening on September 6th, and we responded back on September 8th with revised drawings showing those accommodations that we made for the doors. And they also, one of the other concerns they had was sealing up some of the interior rooms when we're, as part of alternate number one, is doing a, an active ventilation system in Building One, in order to get that ventilated along with doing a mold remediation to improve the indoor air quality in Building One to the point where if the city chose, they could start doing guided tours again in Building One. There's been interest expressed in, in getting that open again. And so as part of that, in order, because there's only one door accessing Building One right now, in order to meet the building code to have the space occupied even for guided tours, we need to have more than one meets progress. So we're looking at replacing the two doors in the curved connecting link on either side of Building One, in order to minimize the amount of space that we have to ventilate as under the alternate. We're sealing all of the doors on the north side of that corridor. There's five of those doors that are just, are the only door into those five rooms. And so SHIPPO had an issue with us putting up a solid barrier over the door opening, so there's no access into those rooms. So we changed that to just doing reinforced poly sheet using the yellow duct tape that's really sticky to cover up those doors. And so if there's any kind of event that they need to get in, they can cut the plastic, unlock the door, and get in those rooms. So that's comments. And I just checked in my emails just before I got out of the car. I received an email from Sarah, acknowledging receipt of the letter that I sent to them on September 8th, and indicating that she was forwarding it on to Natasha for her review. I replied back to reminder that I sent it to both her and Natasha on the 8th. So hopefully they get back to us shortly. But with that, I would like to request approval to issue the plans and specifications for Phase Three Exterior Stabilization at the Regional Treatment Center for bid.
Thank you, Bruce. We can do that through resolution. Scott?
I'd like to offer that resolution, Ben.
Thank you. Scott, we have a resolution. Would someone like to second?
I'll second it. I have a question.
You bet. Thank you, Justin. Go ahead.
Question, just more clarifying to the letter. They pointed out a few things. So I'm just trying to remember, in terms of getting approval to be refunded through the dollars, the grand dollars that are, and the dollars that are there, you mentioned the ventilation. Say the bids come back and we don't have extra funds to do the ventilation, do we have to go back to them? Is like contingent on being refunded that we do the ventilation? Or, explain to me how that works again, please.
Yeah, if it's not eligible, once we get the bids, I envision we're going to go back, so we'll have the actual work again, just to confirm. I want to do that. But yeah, like security cameras are not eligible. So once again, if we do go back and look at the ventilation, I'm going to run a pass each just to ensure.
It's refundable.
Reimbursement and everything will be. And if it's not, then we'll have to go back to legislators, but I don't think that, well, we'll talk about that later on.
I just follow up. So if, so we're going to go back, but let's just say the, we don't have funds to do the ventilation. Could they potentially say, you can't do any of this? Or is it like item la carte where they'll refund some, but they won't do others? But can they say, because if you don't do ventilation, we're not doing any of it?
From SHIPPO, you mean, saying?
Well, because they kind of, the Department of Interior is the other, right?
From Deed?
Yeah.
Yes. So from Deed administering that, they will confirm. So, and I don't believe ventilate certain aspects. Certain aspects are, within the confines of preservation, are eligible, and some that are not, like you said, security cameras, which can be used as a campus security, obviously, but it's not a preservation. So it's really by the definitions, which we will confirm.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Brent?
I was under the understanding with the SHIPPO, that was just to, to maintain the historic, you know, tax credits down in the future. I did not, I was not aware that SHIPPO was going to be involved as far as stating whether we can use the money from the state to do what we need to do to this building. You know, because I mean, I'm not willing to go and start putting a ventilation system through an entire structure other than Building One, because we know for a fact that one's never coming down. So I mean, I'm a little bit confused here as far as I figure SHIPPO is just, we could just do certain things so we could restore, to maintain the tax credits. I did not know it was a requirement in order to be able to get the money from the state.
So SHIPPO is not saying what's an eligible cost or not. I think they're more opining on what you can do to the building. Is that correct? Deed, Department of Employment and Economic Development, is the one who says what's eligible cost. So SHIPPO is not going to impact the eligibility of costs, I believe. That's where we work with Deed, so.
Now, when we go after bids, it's for all the things we discussed earlier, we can still pick and choose what we want to do.
Yes.
Okay. Because I mean, I'm willing to board up all the main floor windows in the basements in order to keep the people out of there and keep our liability down. You know, patch the roofs, keep the water out, so we can maintain the structure for as long as we have to, you know. But, and then anything that might be enhancing of the main structure. But I'm, as long as we can pick and choose on the end, and you know, I'm willing to go forward right now. But if we weren't able to pick and choose, I wouldn't be in favor of it.
Yeah. And the passive ventilation system is strictly that. It would be starting with looking at removing the window air conditioning units, putting louvers in those openings. But we would also need to do additional window removal to get additional louvers to provide a uniform coverage for air circulation through the building. There's, there's no mechanical system associated with it. It's just strictly louvers and having them spread around every floor in every building to allow air to move through the buildings. And again, we, they came back and think it's an insignificant amount of cost to do this.
I'm going to let them pay for it.
Yeah.
Thanks, Brent. Other questions? For Bruce or for Brian? Go ahead, Scott.
Just a comment, I guess. With the conversations on ventilation and the other details with the doors and whatnot, as a part of the whole, they're a relatively small piece of what we're talking about. The biggest impact that's going to be gained from this is the repair of the roofs, keeping the water out of the building and stopping, and very dramatically limiting the deterioration of the building.
Absolutely.
Is that correct?
Yep.
I mean, that, that's 90% of it. That's the big deal here.
Right. The base bid includes covering all of the ground floor windows, all the glass block, and all of the first floor windows, better glass block. And while on Building One, there are aluminum windows at the first floor, but those windows have been replaced, and so they're not considered by SHIPPO to be historically significant, so we can attach plywood right to the aluminum frames on the first floor. We couldn't, we couldn't do that on Second and Third and the tower, because those are all wood windows, and they're considered historically significant. But everywhere else, it's putting plywood, everywhere else except for Building 29. We're putting plywood over the glass block windows on ground on first floors to prevent additional break-ins and additional breaking of the glass block. We're also going around on all of the doors into the building and applying some cheap metal flashing at the floor slab, right at the threshold of the door, because some of the door bottoms have rusted out. And then we're covering those with treated plywood and painting them as well, again, to try and limit the amount of accessibility by those who want to do damage to the campus. So the only two, when this is done, the only two doors that will access the building will be at the east side of Building One in the front, and at the backside of Building One on the backside. Those will only be, those will be the two doors, and those were both installed as part of the previous phases.
Thank you, Bruce. Another question. There's a resolution and a second, accepting the plans and specs and authorizing bids for Project 9508. Roll call, please. Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. The resolution is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
Item number two is a resolution approving the 2023 preliminary budget in the amount of $51,314,518. We'll call on our city finance director, Bill Somer.
Thank you, Your Honor. We did go through this budget at a work session on September 6th at 4:30, so I'm not going to review that again tonight. But we are asking you to approve that preliminary budget and then the preliminary levy, and that's listed in here at $7,650,000 even. We'll also be setting a public meeting on December 5th, 2022, at 6:00 PM or later. That's another resolution. And that's where the public would be allowed to speak as well. It's part of the truth and taxation process that we do every year. So certainly if you have any questions, but I wasn't going to go through it again. We'll go through it again in detail at the December 5th meeting. And between now and December 5th, the Tax Levy Committee will continue to meet and work on this budget too, so.
Thanks, Bill. Yeah, again, that's.
And one other, with the levy, we can always go down, we say this every year, we can always go down by December, but we can't go above where we're at then tonight.
Thank you, Bill. And again, just to remind the public that December 5th is the opportunity for them to speak on, on behalf of the budget to the council.
And I just want to say, we are working at bringing that down. We're not happy right now where it's at, so we would like to bring it down a little more, and we are working on that.
Thanks, Jim. Someone like to offer a resolution?
I will offer that.
Thank you. Jim, accepting the preliminary budget. Second, Brent, questions? Yeah, Scott?
As we get reminded that we can't go up, and, but we can go down, and you're looking at ways to make adjustments, noting that our utilities, we're going to go up by so much for the natural gas bill, 115%, I believe it was. And you did make the, as substantial a change to other utility areas or fuel costs or whatnot. As you maybe find us to go down someplace, I wonder if you might have to go up in some of those other utility areas before we get to finalizing this?
We will review those in detail again. And we'll also come back to you with our utility funds. That's a different, that's the city utility, Water, Sewer, Storm, yet this fall too, prior to December 5th, but.
Thanks, Scott. Thanks, Bill. We have a resolution and a second. Roll call. Yes.
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 Yes. That resolution is approved. Next item would be on the same topic, approving the preliminary levy in the amount of $7.65 million.
I'll offer that.
Thanks, Caroline.
I'll second that.
Thanks, Justin. Roll call, please. Yes.
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 Yes. That resolution is approved. And finally, we'll need a resolution, setting the 2023 budget and levy, public meeting for December 5th, 2022, at 6 o'clock or later.
I'll offer that, Jim.
Jim, Scott, thank you. Roll call, please. Yes.
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 Yes. That resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Item number five is a resolution approving the purchase of a replacement scoreboard at the American Legion Field.
Chad.
Chad Felstool. I thought you were here for the splash pad, but you're here for the scoreboard.
I was not here for the splash pad. My kids are a little old for that, I know.
Good evening, Chad.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name's Chad Felstool. I am the president of the Fergus Falls Youth Baseball Association. We are looking at replacing the scoreboard out at Daly Boone Park. That scoreboard has been there for a number of years and got hit by lightning quite a while ago.
Three or four years ago.
Yeah. And, and so we're looking at replacing it with an inning-by-inning scoreboard. This one just has the score, outs, and count is really all that it is. So this is going to be a big 60-foot approximately, I think. Is that how big it is? Roughly somewhere there, 60-foot wide scoreboard. The total cost that we're looking at is about $70,000. We're waiting on a few bids on some steelwork for the beams that are going to be there in addition to the electrical. So the scoreboard itself is about $53,000. We're looking at about $17,000 for the steelwork and the electrical. The city has about $6,500 that has been set aside on an insurance claim for the past scoreboard that would go towards the new scoreboard. The school is in the process of looking at a contribution to that as well. And our organization has committed to fundraise any amounts over and above what is being contributed by the city and the school for that project. And the way that it would look is getting business sponsors to have banners essentially underneath the scoreboard for a five, seven, eight-year term that they would, that they would pay to contribute for that. So no funding from the city, other than what that money is sitting there for from the insurance claim. claim, but we will fundraise the balance of it.
Thanks, Chad. Questions from the council? Someone like to offer that resolution?
I will offer it.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Jim. Thank you, Brent. Is the, just out of curiosity, is American Legion one of the fundraisers, I mean, is one of the sponsors as well?
I know, we've talked to them. I, I think that's potential, obviously, with not being open with pull tab funds and gambling funds and things like that. But it's something that we can certainly talk to them.
Yeah, just curious. I know they've done so much out there.
They've done a lot out there.
Assume the film.
That, that original field, we put three hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Yeah. I know they've been a great partner with the city on that field.
I happen to be commander at the time, so.
Thanks. All right, thanks, Chad. Any other questions? We have a resolution in a second. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Thanks, Chad.
Thanks, Chad.
Item number six is a resolution approving a development agreement between the city and Sky Cruise Services. Brian, you borrow?
Yes, thank you, your honor. Good evening again. Back in August, Sky Cruise approached the city. If you recall, Sky Cruise Services is our new airport F B O manager at the Ferguson Municipal Airport. They approached us, myself, and requesting a development agreement for remodeling the airport A D rival departure lobby. Since then, worked through all of, and we've reviewed this with Bill Somer and everything well, but included in the packet is that development contract for your review and comments. I just want to know pursuant for the terms, I believe everything is consistent, what was shared before with this council and everything, but it's also included for review. But the total city share, if you look in the reimbursement to Sky Cruise and the thirty-three thousand, seven hundred estimated for our portion of construction cost, that sums up to fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred. With, if they're giving a reimbursement to Sky Cruise, it's also noted in there, they're also going to apply all material invoices, everything in that amount to, to validate their, their cost incurred, contribution to this project. So at this time, I just want to note that we do have available funds in the Airport four fifty-six fund. I am going to try to make, utilize maintenance and operation funds as they're reimbursed by the state up to seventy-five percent, but not everything can be used for that. So all the additional costs would be coming out of the Airport four fifty-six capital fund. So at this time, I'll just open up to any questions you might have.
Thank you, Brian. Questions, comments from the council? Someone like to get a resolution on the floor?
I'll offer that.
Thank you. Tom?
I'll second.
Thank you. Krista? Scott?
So I looked through the packet, it appears to me that this material is essentially the same as what we saw in the first view at our committee discussion of it. Still involves a management fee credit, which is tinkering with the contract, which I'm not comfortable with. And it doesn't include any additional details as to just really what would be done other than the real thin schematic plan. And I'm afraid I can't support it. It doesn't look, it doesn't look like what I was expecting to see. I was thinking that we would be seeing something that had, you know, a better version of what was being proposed, and that it wouldn't involve any tinkering with the contract. I will not be supporting this.
Thanks. Scott?
Brian, this doesn't have the rent credit in it, right?
Yeah, your honor, if I may, Mr. Womack, yeah, just to be clear, that there, there was the initial amendment, which was presented and executed, well, we have, we have executed that, but that amendment basically was a reduction of transaction between the revenue generated from the hangars of two thousand dollars, and instead of them paying us, and then us in turn paying their management fee, it was just a reduction, reducing their management fee for that. I can present that back. But that, that is not, that is not, that, you're right, you are correct, that's not consistent with what's before you right now, because we're looking to just do a reimbursement, same fees and everything, it's just reimbursement based on the invoices that they can provide for reimbursement.
So that rent credit, Brian was talking about, that you already acted upon, right? And that was approved for next year, right?
Yes, that, that we're looking for implementation in January. Now, I have spoken to Sky Cruise about it, that first amendment I'm referring to, and they, they will consider rescinding it. It was just an offering. If there is any, you know, misperception or any questions about it, I want to say, they will consider rescinding that offer, so that's just fine with them, too, as well. But just two separate issues right here, but just if the council would like, they will offer that, too.
Your honor, I got just maybe two things.
Justin, go ahead.
To me, it seems clean, if Bill's comfortable with it, and, you know, rather than them pay us, and we turn around and pay them right back, to me, it seems like a pretty simple, easy plus minus, we go forward. As far as the renderings go, you know, you alluded to this, I don't remember which meeting it was, but, you know, you didn't envision a big engineering cost and doing all sorts of elaborate things. This is the face of the airport, I get that, and coming into the community, but it needs a facelift, and I don't know that we need to go spend thousands of dollars for engineering to do it. I think what's being proposed, I'm willing to support, staff's obviously done a lot of time on this, and if staff wasn't comfortable moving forward, then I would take that recommendation. So I am comfortable moving forward as it's presented.
Thanks. Thanks, Justin. Brent?
I won't be supporting it. I didn't support it the first time around. We have enough projects going on out there right now, and even though there is state and federal money involved, we still have to come up with our portion of it. I know they wanted their fuel system fixed, that is one thing that's on the docket, you got the lighting system that needs to be fixed, you have all this on the docket right now. I think we need to work on these. I'm not against this, I'm against it right now. I think we need to work and get the other ones taken care of first, and then make sure that we still have the funding available to do this later.
Thanks, Brett. Anyone else? Any questions, comments before we call for the vote?
Do you want me to talk about the fuel system briefly? We, we talked about that, and just to give you a little peace of mind, we discussed that between Brian and Guy and myself and Andrew. Our fuel system down at our shop, we run that out of our equipment fund. So Brian proposed to us, could we help fund that fuel system then through the equipment fund, much the same way? The concept actually does, you know, could work, and then we would rent that fuel system for the portion that the equipment fund put in back in, and the airport budget would need to pay that over. So thus, there would be funding available to get that done. I just wanted to give you a little peace of mind on that, but that is an option of doing that, and we've done that with the snow removal equipment out there as well. When we replace the big bat wing plow.
For the local match.
Huh?
For the local match.
For the match, for the match portion, came out of the equipment fund, because then we're renting it back on that portion. Now, I'm not telling you to do one way or the other, just this is a way that we, that we can do it, and that we've done it for the other pieces of equipment out there, so.
It's available.
Correct.
Your honor, if I may, just to enhance what Bill, yeah, we present that source's uses, so, yes, Mr. Thompson, you are correct, we have the airport joint repair, we have the fuel system, that will be coming back to the next council. We have the A W O system, the I L S, and the lottery remodel. So when you look at our local contribution share for all those projects, we're about five hundred twelve, we're five hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Now, if you take in the amount that's balanced, current balance in the four fifty-six fund, we're looking at a projected shortfall of two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Now, what, based on Bill's comments there about funding the fuel system through the equipment fund, if we do that, that will in turn, in fact, change that two hundred and twenty thousand dollars shortfall projection into about a balance of fifty-six thousand dollars plus. So that's, that's what we're proposing, and saying we have sufficient funds to proceed with our portion of it, so.
Thanks, Brian. So any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Agbert.
Yes.
Womack. Rupert.
Yes.
No.
That resolution is approved.
Thank you.